Two, one.
Okay. Hello, everyone, and thank you for joining us for the Finance Committee meeting. Today is Tuesday, September eighth. It is about 1:08, 1:07 PM here on the Zoom platform. And present, we have myself, I'm Liz Mealy, Bonnie Katz, and Adam Yoder from the Finance Committee. We also have Mayor Derek Slaughter. We have IT, as always, on these meetings. Joe Pavlock from Finance, Nick Grimes from the Treasurer's Department. We have five items on today's agenda, including any related items. And let's kick things off. Item number one on our agenda today, and you will pardon me here, is a contract between the city and... Hey, Adam, can you help me out? I just accidentally closed that window.
Yeah, the first one is a resolution agreement with McCarthy &amp; Company, PC certified public accountants. Our Treasurer, Nick Grimes, is bringing that forward.
Okay, Nick, what do you have to tell us about that?
This is an auditing firm that we'd like to use for our business privilege taxes. If you guys remember, a few years ago, probably four years ago, actually, we hired an auditing firm, E-Collect. They were really for discovery audits, while Burckheimer was our collector for business privilege tax. And they found us a lot of new businesses that weren't on the tax rolls. But that's their specialty. And now that we have the business privilege collection in-house, we would like to hire an auditor to do our auditing of our current accounts that we have questions about, that have very complex filings, that might be delinquent or uncompliant for a variety of reasons. McCarthy Company is a wonderful company. I've actually known them since I took this job through the different associations that I'm members with, very active there. They work with a lot of different municipalities that collect business privilege tax, including the Keystone Central School District, which does the business privilege collection for all of Clinton County. Now that we've gotten through our first, it's not really a full year of collection, but through our collection deadline, these services are more needed. And it's something that we've always planned on doing, but we needed to see sort of our cost analysis of collecting the business privilege in-house, which I think I sent you guys all an update of. It's very, very good. And in fact, in the first year, we were able to collect it cheaper than Burckheimer was able to. So I think we can move forward with this now. And with any good auditing services, they pay for themselves. So we would be collecting more than we would be spending for auditing.
Thanks, Nick. Yeah, I think we all saw the information that came out before the weekend, that this has been a power move for the city already, which is pretty exciting. And thank you for taking the lead on that, Nick, and doing the legwork. Janice? Or, excuse me, Bonnie, Adam, any questions?
No, I just think that Nick has done an incredible job here as far as bringing this in-house. I mean, it was a huge ordeal to bring this back in-house, but look at the accomplishments so far. And looking forward to seeing how this is going to progress in the next few years.
Yeah, no questions for me either. I would just second what Bonnie said. This is good stuff, great work, and let's keep it going.
And I don't really have much follow-up, Nick, except I don't know that I saw it in your email this weekend, but maybe I just missed it because I read through it kind of quickly. What is our timeline? I know you'd originally projected maybe three years for us to actually make back the money that we'd spent kind of preparing for this transition before we were net positive on this, on bringing the privilege back in?
I think we'll be net positive this year. You know, there is definitely some setup costs, which is why we're able to do these two contracts at no additional budgeted dollars for next year. But even with the setup cost, I think, and it's hard to tell because we have some delinquent procedures that we need to go through that cost a little bit of money here at the end of the year. But I think even with that, we'll be able to, with our startup cost and our 2020 cost, it'll be cheaper than what we would have paid Burckheimer to collect it for the full year.
Now, so, okay, that's fantastic. Well, excellent. Are there any questions or points from Finance, from the Finance Department, or anybody else? Joe, are you so excited to see somebody who actually seems to not be looking for more money, but instead bringing it in? Yes, that is the job of the Treasurer's Department. Hearing nothing further, I take a motion.
So I make a motion. We pass this on to a full body of council with a positive recommendation.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Item number two on our agenda also comes to us from the Treasurer's Office. And, excuse me, is an agreement between the city and, I keep losing this agenda, and York Adams Tax Bureau. Nick?
This is another step for our collections with business privilege and local service tax. This would allow local service taxes to be filed online. And this is, it's through the York Adams Tax Bureau, but they've sort of developed the software that we use for business privilege and local service tax. So that's why the contract is with them, and it works directly with our software that we currently use. It's actually the same system that the school district uses for the EIT collection for the entire county. It does help us in efficiency. It does help us with staff time. You know, it takes a lot of time to process thousands of local service tax returns manually. But bigger than all of that, one of the reasons why I'd like to move forward with it sooner than later is the service aspect to it. It's one of the few things that we couldn't provide our taxpayers that Burckheimer did when we made the switch. In fact, we wanted the local service tax to be moved to the school district with the earned income tax, but they weren't really interested in that, so we had to have it here. This would allow us to provide the businesses the service that they had with Burckheimer for the online filings, which a lot of people take advantage of. There's a few big payroll companies that do not use it just because they'd have to file individually for each specific business, and they may do payroll for 500 businesses in Williamsport. But especially for the very large employers who have, you know, maybe over 500 employees, they prefer to use online systems, not only because it's easier, but because it's more secure than mailing us, you know, personal information from their employees. And then also for the smaller businesses, you know, when they only have one or two employees, instead of remembering all of their coupons to pay every quarter and what they have to pay, they can just go online and do it. And just for budget, since this is the Finance Committee, for budget reasons, the first contract, I talked with Joe about it, we're going to roll it out a little slowly because we don't want to spend too much money in 2020 anyways. And it's really groundwork, which wouldn't start too in-depth until 2021. But we do have legal services and contract services that we used a lot less of our budget than we expected, that we can start that in 2024. But it'll be, you know, a little more clearly reflected in the 2021 budget. And then this year, we would have to pay for the system prior to January 1. But since it's for service effective January 1, it would actually be a 2020 budget item and be pretty much pre-billed for service for 2021.
Clearly desirable, given what we're walking into in 2021. Can I, any questions, Bonnie, from you or Adam? Adam, Bonnie, do you have anything you'd like to ask?
I'm sorry, I didn't see. I was on mute. No, I don't have any questions. The $7,500 per year will be payable on January 1 of each year. So as you said, that's going to be pre-billing, right?
It's, we would have to pay it by January 1, so likely we would pay for it in December of this year. But that would be for service in 2021. So when you go back and look at audits or the budget, it would be on a 2021 budget expenditure.
Bonnie, you'll recognize the expense in the year that it's for. So if it's paid in advance, we'll hold off on expensing that until the next year.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify that.
Got it. Wait, so Joe, how's it working? We're putting it on 2021's budget, even though we're paying it in 2020?
Yeah, it's a prepaid expense. So we're paying it as expense in 2020 for the following year. So we'll expense it in the following year.
Okay. Nick, is there, what is our, how long is this rate locked in? I guess. You reserve the right to adjust the annual subscription fee, so.
Yeah, it's really, it's really just annual. Their costs have not changed very much because they work with a lot of different places, mainly for earned income tax collections, the biggest user of this service. There's other local service tax as well. The biggest difference for cost is, if you guys saw in here, there are monthly, quarterly costs that can be billed to us for maintenance that they have to provide. I've looked at a few places that, and that's based on how much traffic goes through their servers, I guess, for collection. And places that are similar size of what we would be collecting pay about $40 to $50 per quarter. So that's going to be the more variable rate. Not that they couldn't change the $7,500, but from everyone I've talked to, that's going to stay still for a while unless something drastic changes.
Got it. Understood. So our exposure is likely similar moving forward, but we have basically, they give us 120-day notice on the change, if they were to change the subscription fee at some point?
Correct. And that gives us a chance to drop out if we would so choose.
Yeah, if we would feel the need. Got it. Adam, any questions from you?
No.
Okay.
Liz, I have a question. On the resolution, should it be put in there, how much this is?
I can. I know we've gone back and forth on that sometimes. It doesn't matter either way to me. The only reason why we might not want it there is because this will just continue to renew. And I guess there's still that quarterly fee that is variable that we don't know. But I can certainly put in what the first annual billing will be if that's your preference.
I don't know. I always say, Nick, that it's easiest to have the information there. I know we don't always do it, but it just, it makes it a little easier when we post this information to the website for people who are looking at it. You know, for people who aren't municipal officials kind of looking at things, just sort of gauge right there. It's right out there, instead of having to dig through the contract to find it, you know? And I'm not sure to what extent we're posting the contract online. So our financial obligation is not as transparent as it would be if we posted it, you know, if we put it directly in the resolution. But I would agree with you, there is some variability. So it might be more in an annual, in an approximate annual amount of $7,500 instead of in a not-to-exceed amount or something, given that we're not quite sure what our exposure is.
Liz, I placed the whole resolution with the contracts online, if that helps.
I thought you posted the contracts. I would still say, though, Janice, that it's just, for people who aren't necessarily used to reading contracts, it might be nice. It's probably more transparent to put it right in the resolution rather than to put it, you know, only in the contract. And we do, of course, execute some contracts that are proprietary in some way. Well, I guess they have to be. They have to be allowed to be public information if we're executing, correct?
Yes.
Yes, exactly. Anyway, yeah, it's up to you. It's really a minor point, but.
I'll put it on the notes there. And if you're okay with it, I'll add the hourly rate to the previous resolution as well.
I think that probably would be wise. But any further questions from anyone?
These were reviewed by the solicitors. I forgot to tell you that. The first resolution was reviewed by Austin and approved. And then the second was reviewed and approved by Norm and the mayor. We've also had a discussion about this, and he views it positively.
Okay. Well, it seems pretty remarkable if we can bring the same level of service back in-house and be at a break-even point with our prior-year expenses within a year and then at a savings point next year. That's, it's hard to argue with, Nick. And we're glad to providing the same level of service, I think, moving forward as we would have been under, not SenTax, under Burckheimer. That's, that's, is there, Nick, we don't currently allow work and tail and business privilege tax filing online, correct?
We do not, and there's very, very few places. I'm not even sure Burckheimer allows that. I don't think they do, however.
Yeah.
Okay. However, York Adams Tax Bureau is finishing developing that right now with our software company. The relationship there is kind of neat. Their bureau is so large that they have people from our software company on staff that continually develop and grow the software. And then we all, all the other users get to benefit from that, that use that same software. So they're going to start collecting it online in January of 2021. And it'll be through the same PA Light system. However, there may be some additional costs depending on, you know, their development costs and if there's more server testing or security or whatever else they need to do. But we can review that at the beginning of 2021.
Excellent. It does seem like that would be a huge boon to area businesses and to area taxpayers.
Right. The taxpayers, I would use it more often. One of the issues with individual businesses filing with it is, unlike local service tax, there's a large amount of backup that's required with the business privilege tax. Local service tax, usually your software gives you a report anyways of what you've withheld from employees. We've already discussed within our different groups that were a part of that collect business privilege tax, that online filings, it's going to be a little harder to get the compliance of the required backup documentation when you have online filing. But.
Understood. Maybe someday. Well, anyway, hopefully, hopefully it's not terribly complicated. But yeah, having, providing all that documentation has been a little onerous. It seems that we've been doing more of that this year in my business than we had previously. And it's overwhelming. Anyway, if there are no further questions, I'll take a motion.
Before we go on a motion, I just want to say there's one person that's probably very happy about all this, who constantly said we would save money bringing everything back in-house, is Carolyn Bullock. She never understood why it was taken out of house. And I think she's probably saying, "Thank you very much, Nick."
My pleasure.
And I used to hear from her all the time about how upset she was about it.
Well, I think there's just, you know, there's, there's a time and a place, and you need an individual in the position who can understand the processes to make something like that happen. And the processes have changed over the last 15, 20 years. And so much of it involves kind of updated technology. Anyway, Nick was the right man at the right time.
You better believe it. You better believe it.
A young guy who understands how to make this stuff happen. And I'm not, it's been maybe a minute since we had somebody like that in the Treasurer's Office, so.
That's for sure.
Anyway, Bonnie, would you like to make a motion on it too, while you're talking?
I make a motion that we pass this on to the full body of council with a positive recommendation.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right. Moving on then. And I apologize, my Wi-Fi is kind of slow here. Item number three is a resolution authorizing the execution of the Municipal Winter Traffic Services Agreement between the Commonwealth Department of Transportation and the City of Williamsport. Mr. Winder?
Good afternoon. This is our annual agreement with PennDOT in regards to the winter traffic services agreement. What this is, is this covers the PennDOT routes in the city that the Streets and Parks Department maintains during the winter season, during snowfall, ice, et cetera. This year's allocation from PennDOT went up roughly $1,000. So this year, it is $10,126.08. Just to touch base on the roads that we cover with this, it is Campbell Street between Third and Fourth Street, also the stretch of Fourth Street from Campbell Street heading west to the city line, Hepperton Street between Basin and Fourth Street, Ridge Avenue from Fourth Street to Grimesville Road, Viabella, which would be the entire stretch of Viabella from Hepperton to Basin, and then Basin Street between Viabella and Third Street. It is a very good agreement. It does get us reimbursement for the salt and labor involved in covering those areas. And up until, I want to say, three years ago, we just did it and got no reimbursement back from PennDOT. So now that we are getting reimbursement, it's definitely a savings on our budget.
Excellent. Thanks, Adam. Questions?
All I have to say is we have to thank Adam because Adam's the one who went after this to begin with. Adam, Adam Winder. And if, like you said, we were not getting reimbursed for this. And if it wasn't for you, I think we'd still be not getting reimbursed. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would second that. If we were doing this before and not getting reimbursed, I would say, "Good job, Adam." Now, the reimbursement is what it is. The only question I had was, does this fully cover our cost to do these streets? I'm assuming it at least closes the gap substantially, but.
The way that PennDOT bases it is the average snowstorm. And then they have a calculation of so much per square mile multiplied by the width determines how much material we should be putting on the street. Last year, yes, with a mild winter. If we had a heavy winter, then we would be at a point where we could possibly reach out to PennDOT and renegotiate the cost.
Got you.
But it is based on the average winter. So if we don't get very much snow, they don't decrease at all. So it is definitely a win for us. But if we get a heavier winter, then it's hoping the guys only use the proper amount of material, which is very hard because they get a little excited when they see a road that the snow's not melting on because the temperature to activate the salt is too low and there's not enough traffic. They think putting more material down makes it work faster. It's just a concept of trying to keep everybody safe. So I want to say, over the years, it will balance out.
I figured that was the case. I just, you know, it's a new thing for me, so just trying to understand the mechanisms of it. So I appreciate it very much, Adam.
Thank you.
No other questions?
Great. Thanks, Adam. And Adam. Yeah, I mean, clearly, this is better than not getting compensated at all. And also interesting, I suppose, to note the number of cities, the number of roads in the city that are under, that are theoretically PennDOT roads, which always gives me pause. But generally beneficial. And Adam, you say PennDOT would be open to increasing the amount of reimbursement if we can demonstrate that we've had more expenditures than what they've compensated us for already?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Excellent. Yeah, it's hard to argue with this at this point. Adam, talk to me a little bit about how it, how it works in general. The advantages and disadvantages, I suppose, if we can talk about it for just a minute, of having PennDOT be responsible for certain roads within the city. Or I guess let me preface that by saying that in my experience, we know that there are more restrictions related to those roads. They're harder for us to close for public events. But then obviously, we don't do any of the actual tarmac maintenance. We don't maintain the road itself, aside from doing plowing. What, from your perspective, what are some of the negatives and what are some of the positives on that?
The negative is that PennDOT controls certain roadways to the extent of, you know, what's allowed to take place on those, you know, shutdowns, et cetera. They only maintain the roadway itself as far as the material, the blacktop material. Everything beneath the roadway is ours to take care of. So all the stormwater, if a sinkhole pops up, catch basins, anything of that nature is ours to maintain. So the negative side is they dictate to us what we can and cannot do with the roadway. The only positive is that it is their responsibility to repave it. Honestly, I think that's the only positive, the PennDOT having the roadway there. The lighting we're required to maintain, and it has to be per their specifications on any of their roadways. So there's a very large struggle to get LED streetlights put up on PennDOT routes. We maintain the lights. We have to pay for the electricity that runs those lights. But we had to jump through hoops to get LED lights put up there. If a storm sewer pipe breaks, we have to jump through hoops to be able to repair it. It has to be, I remember one year, we actually had to repair a pipe on Hepperton Street next to the prison. And we had to do it on a Saturday because they decided that there was too much congestion of traffic Monday through Friday. So naturally, the city had to pay overtime to have guys come in on a Saturday and repair that pipe. It's just the way that they get to tell us what we can and cannot do on a roadway that comes through our city, and we're required to maintain everything but the blacktop.
Oh, thank you. That was, that actually helped clarify a lot for me. I appreciate that. Yeah, I mean, I know we've been having kind of an ongoing dispute with PennDOT regarding the street trees in Newberry, which of course would not be a dispute if the city were doing the rebuild on that road. But I was just kind of curious where the, sort of how the, how the sharing broke down there. And to what extent it was advantageous to it and to what extent, to us, and to what extent it isn't. The other thing, of course, that we can add into the things that PennDOT takes care of is that they are compensating us to clear the roadway, which I suppose, some small enough, but.
Just to give you a little more background with the city and PennDOT, if you take the on-ramp on Fourth Street in Newberry, the lights that actually, the streetlights that actually start up the ramp and are actually on the Route 15 there, just before you get to the Lock Haven exit, we maintain all those lights as well. If you go to the Reach Road Interchange, the overpass there, we're required to maintain that. The lights, the streetlights within the interchange there, we're required to maintain those. It's just, you know, they have all the control. We have to maintain the stuff. The walkway over the highway down by the old C.A. Reed, Water Tower Square now, they built that, we're required to maintain it.
Huh. And would we be permitted to dismantle it if we wanted to? Not that we do.
Nope. They have the, in the very ancient agreement, it actually says that our requirement is to maintain the electricity, the fencing, the concrete approach to each side. And any decisions of, any major repair decisions must be ran through PennDOT's district office.
Yeah, okay. Interesting. Well, that might bear, you know, maybe we should have a look at roads that are considered PennDOT roads in the city and sort of how, it seems as though some of the maintenance requirements might be onerous for us. Maybe we should look at that and fiscally whether it balances out as it currently is set up. At least it would be good to understand it a little better, our relationship with PennDOT in that context and their obligations and our obligations and how much it's costing us. But this is not the time to come to that understanding. So, Adam, Bonnie, do you have any follow-up questions?
No.
Nope.
Okay. Okay. Um, fantastic. Then I'll take a motion on this particular item.
I'll make a motion to forward to the full body of council with a positive recommendation.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Sorry, guys. Um, final item on our agenda for today is item number four. While the final item aside from any related items, is a resolution authorizing the city of Williamsport to award a contract for the purpose, purchase of two compressed natural gas BRT plus low-floor transit buses. Mr. Winder, you're back on deck.
As part of my plan to get, uh, council members familiar with faces here at RBT and what their roles are, I do have Chris Clark, the fleet manager here with me. He is the individual that works on the, um, uh, when we purchase buses, exactly what features we're looking for and making sure that we stay up to date on, um, the newest features out, um, requirements for ADA, et cetera. So I'm gonna turn this one over to Chris Clark and he will present, and I'll be here to help him answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Winder. You're welcome.
Good afternoon, everyone. Uh, like you stated, uh, this, this is a resolution for the purchase of two compressed natural gas low-floor transit buses for, uh, the city of Williamsport and River Valley Transit. Uh, we will be buying them, uh, from the CPTA consortium contract at six thirty-five oh sixty-five each. The, uh, from the Gilling Corporation, which is the same, same corporation we've been buying our buses for to, uh, to match our tooling and our training. It is also the current state contract bid holder.
Um, this was all part of the CCA that was approved by council approximately two, three months ago. Um, this is a hundred percent state funded. Um, there is no local match. And we'll enter taking questions.
Okay. Uh, questions? Bonnie, Adam?
Adam, is this anywhere part of that seven point two mil?
No, no, this is, um, uh, Mrs. Kats, do you remember the CCA that was approved by the state? And then council had to give their approval on it about two months ago. Um, this is nineteen twenties CCA capital budget.
Okay, you're refreshing my memory here and I'm trying to think about it. Okay.
If you'd like, after the meeting, I could just send you another copy of the CCA so it's fresh.
Yeah, I, the mind isn't focusing on that. I can't remember.
We purchased a van for the HVAC employee.
Oh, okay. Okay, I remember that.
And, um, I believe that the CCA was around five million dollars the state gave us.
Correct.
Um, just for capital improvements.
Gotcha. Okay, I remember that. Okay.
Okay. Yeah, I think, Mr. Winder, as you've probably already intuited, um, RBT's budget has been relatively opaque to, to city council for quite a while now. But I suspect this year there will probably be a lot of questions about which items are coming out of which lines and, and all of that um, in this vein. Uh, because our, I mean, we, we're obviously used to a certain percentage of, um, city funding coming from, you know, from say, community development, block grant funding, et cetera, et cetera. Um, but, uh, but RBT, so much of RBT's funding and, and even operating budget is, um, is state or federal grant money that, uh, that it can be a little hard to kind of untangle what's coming from where. Um, so, uh, thank you for your patience with us as we try to figure it out.
Thank you.
Um, Mr. Yoder?
Really? You hear me, okay?
Yep.
No, nothing off the top of my head. I mean, it, it seems to me that over the years we were, we're cycling through these, you know, as they come to end of life or what have you, is what this appears to be. So it's state funded. You know, nothing crazy, crazy for me.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think there's anything too terribly exciting about this particular item. Uh, Adam, uh, Winder, the one, the only other follow-up question I'd have is where does this leave us with the fleet? Can you tell me what our sort of replacement schedule for buses is moving forward? Whether we have a year or two where we really don't need to get any new buses or whether we're always basically doing two, two to four a year?
We average two a year due to the mileage and, um, life expectancy. Um, the larger thirty-five and forty-foot buses, their life expectancy is.
Twelve, twelve years.
Years.
Thousand miles.
Five hundred thousand miles. When you get down to the thirty-foot, twenty-four-foot or the transit vans.
They're ten years.
They're ten years. Um, and then when you get into the support vehicles, they're around a five-year lifespan. And then mileage definitely plays a major role. So the, the mileage, as you can definitely imagine, adds up a lot faster than the years. I believe we're down to five diesel buses. And then, um, after those five are gone, everything will be CNG.
Okay. And are we still finding that CNG is the better investment for us? That is to say we're saving, I guess, I, it's a, it's a two-pronged question. I understand that we're saving money um, by operating CNG buses, but part of that is related to a state rebate that's on offer? Um, would they still be the cheaper option for us if the rebate were to go away?
Uh, yes. Uh, by the way, we're manufacturing with our own, uh, compressed natural gas station. We're still exceedingly lower than the, uh, the state diesel price.
Okay.
Per gallon.
So, so even if, even if some of the incentives that were put in place during the natural gas boom were to expire for some reason, we would still be sitting much prettier with, with our, with our fleet of natural gas buses. And they, and they're holding up, they're, they're holding up as well for us as the diesels?
Correct, on your first statement. And yes, they're, they're doing a little bit better than the diesels. Um, there's less, uh, after treatment issues and, um, down the road issues. Uh, but they, they do inherently have, have their own issues with heat dissipation. But, uh, we've, we, Cummins and ourselves have worked through a lot of that.
Excellent. Um, I'm pleased to hear it. I, I, it's, in some ways, it's exciting to see us throw everything behind natural gas, you know, clean natural gas and have fewer emissions on the street and everything. But then, of course, you worry that we're gonna put all of our eggs in one basket and that basket won't turn out to be super trustworthy. So I'm glad, I'm glad to hear it's working out for us. Um, okay. Are there any other follow-up questions from any other members of the committee?
Oh.
Uh, Bonnie, I'm sorry, you're breaking up. I'm not sure if that's on my end or yours.
I said, no, I have no questions.
Okay. Um, that in that case, would someone like to make a motion?
Full body of council with a positive recommendation.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Um, thank you very much for joining us today, everyone. Does anyone have any related items? Mr. Pavlock, anything from you?
No.
Okay. And Mr. Pavlock, I think you said we're, we're on track to see the audit sometime in the middle of October, correct? With, for the finance committee?
I'm working on that right now.
Okay. Fantastic. It's a fun process every year, I understand. Um, okay. Uh, does anyone else have any related items?
Nope.
Nope.
Okay, then, uh, let's mark this one down for the record books. It is one forty-six PM and a one forty-five PM, excuse me. I guess we're hereby concluding the, uh, finance committee meeting of Tuesday, September eighth. Um, thank you very much, everyone. I'll look forward to seeing you on Thursday and I will, uh, um, have a good week. Okay?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Bonnie. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.